He doesn't have to.
You need to sign to you, would that help? Recording in progress.
Let's start the new year off right.
Let's call this December meeting of the county council. Mr. Moore, would you like to send the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, you want to take a minute? Minutes? We will leave out two, so any additions or corrections?
I make a motion to approve.
Bill makes a motion to approve. In seconds, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, Mr. Durbin.
Good morning, Senator. Thank you for the opportunity to ask about this. So we had a part-time position that was grant-funded in our front office for several years. He resigned. We replaced that person, and in this year's budget, we planned on moving that from a grant-funded to an actual budget position, or yeah, position. It was approved on that. So we actually had two part-time positions that we were going to hire for 2023 rather than a full-time. However, the person who came into this part-time has proved to be exceptional at her job and willing to take on additional responsibilities. So I'd like to move her into the full-time position. It won't affect my budget. Her pay will be under the budgeted part by about $20,000. So I'm actually not even going to spend that much. Her perf still will be made up for. We'll have to use some of that salary money for her perf in that. FICA was already figured in for the two part-time positions, so that will, that'll actually go down a little bit. She does not want insurance, but even if she changes her mind on the insurance at some point, we actually over-budgeted her insurance by $27,468. So we should be, even if she took the highest plan, that would cover that. So essentially, it saves us money to move her to part, to full-time. Our plan was to save money by having part-time, but this actually is less than part-time. So I'm just asking for approval to start her on 1-1, 1-3, I guess, as full-time.
So taking the two part-times and making them.
Correct, correct.
How many positions that be?
That will be seven. Same number of positions. It's just, it would have been six and a half, I guess. This moves it to seven. Actually, it would have been seven with the two part-time.
And it's in your budget.
It is in our budget. No changes to that. I mean, we'll have to move it from one category to another, if that's all.
Anybody else have any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve of.
Kenny makes a motion to approve.
Second.
Ashley seconds. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Mr. Brown?
Thank you. I think we're a little heavy-hearted upstairs because of an overnight arrest. And when I asked to be put on the agenda, we were down three employees, and now I've learned we're down four. So I know that you're working on it. I know that there's a committee that's working on it, an HR position, but we're, we're losing employees because of money, and it's, and it's very frustrating. I handed out math. This was supposed to be celebratory when we envisioned being here today. In the child support division, Shelley came in a while back and said, hey, we're in top five in a lot of categories. And while we applauded that, the coaching, he said, boy, it'd be great if we could ever get to number one in something. I'm sure that was frustrating to hear at the time, but she did it, and the child support office did it. And that picture is a graphic that shows we're the only county in the state of Indiana that is matching a certain criteria in child support. And I, I think that's, that's something that we should be proud of as a county, and we take great pride in the work that Shelley does. So I think it's absolutely amazing. And they don't give trophies for that. We do have a little gold star upstairs that we hand out for good work, but that tends to be unsatisfying as well. In the child support incentive funds, in the prosecutor incentive fund, we have $70,000, about $70,500. In the prosecutor 4D incentive fund, we have $105,000. This is money that's paid back to the county for the work that, that we do. And then we don't have the authority over the clerk's 4D incentive fund, but it's $109,500. So the child support office has generated money back to the county of over a quarter billion dollars, and we're asking for authorities to spend $8,000 of it. So what we would like to do is supplement Chad Smith's stipend for his work as our child support deputy by $2,000. I'm not sure that makes county approval, since he's a part-time employee. We're asking that these come out of the 4D incentive fund that has the balance of $105,727.72. We're asking for $2,000 for Chad, $2,000 for Shelley, $2,000 for Nancy, and $2,000 for Julie for the hard work that they have done for the county and for the results that they're getting for the county. That'd be my first request.
Do I have any questions? Concerns?
This is, this is just a one-time.
One-time shot? Are you going to add it to the salary?
Yeah.
Well, it's a, it's a one-time 2022 addition to the salary. It's a modification of the salary bonus to 2022. But we, we lost Julie, or we are losing Julie. That was a, we knew it was potential, but when, when you can go to another agency and get a dollar insurance and make over 10,000 more, or 12,000 more, it's an issue for us. So I, I know as a county, we try to keep things balanced among the offices, and I get that, but sometimes it's difficult because we've, like I said, we've had four employees leave now, and, and you know, I think we're, we have either fought off or we are fighting off, you know, other elected officials looking at our employees and so on. So it's something that we're going to address in the future. I know you're working on it. I know you're working on it. So this would be just for 2022, to pay out in this last pay period. Again, our prosecutor incentive fund balance is $105,272.72, and we're asking for $8,000 of it.
And that, that's the money that comes back to the county, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Thanks for all the performance.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't have any problems in that. It's money coming back.
Well, a little bit, but other points.
We've had, we've been here before, and this is in so many states, we don't have any control over that.
Any other questions? Concerns?
Is that for this pay period or the first pay period in January?
Well, as I understand, then we still have one more pay period this, this, in 2022?
The actual day's worked, yes, but it'll be paid in January.
Yeah, that's what we understood.
He, he's asked to do it for this pay period, so it's one of those, it'll be canceled Friday.
Well, I guess the only problem, I guess, if we approve this, who says that another department's not going to come in and say, well, I'm in the same situation. I want extra money for my employees. See what I'm saying? You open up a box of worms here where you, where you draw the line to cut it off. That's, I'm sure they deserve money. I'm sure they worked hard, but we can't let it get out of control either.
It's not county, it's not county dollars, you know?
It was.
Still paying.
What?
It was. We spent the county dollars, and the state reimbursed it, if that's what your incentive funds are.
Incentive does not need approval by the state. Incentive does not need counsel.
No, I'm just saying, he is doing it out of.
Incentive.
Right, right, that's what I'm saying. County spent the money, and the state reimbursed it, so you have control over it, that's why.
Doesn't need approval.
Just a salary.
I understand it.
I guess I would rather, I would rather see, negotiate a better pay scale for 223 and do it that way rather than come back as bonus, I guess, for 222. I think it would be more fair than the other offices would have a chance to do the same thing.
But I guess in response to, to accept I've been involved in that, we had asked them, or then we're told, I know it's, it's across the board.
Well, we technically already set 2023, too, so it doesn't matter if it's today or if it's next month, it's still going to be a change that's going to change a budget that we've already set.
So this is money that, at your discretion as far as how they're spent?
Well, and Shelley jumped in here, but in the 4D, we have to spend it within 4D collections. So it's, it's, we can't just go by things in the prosecutor's office. It's got to be related to 4D collection and obviously salaries for employees that are doing the work that's been added.
Did we lose this employee to the city?
Did.
So how do we get that funding? Tell me that so I can make sure that I'm on the right page.
I'm sorry, how do you get what?
How the funding comes back?
The funding comes back quarterly into county general, based on our performance.
That's what, that's what I thought, that's what was.
With the incentive that Mr. Brown was citing, that come back through, to interview incentive funds, not county general.
Correct. Or they come back into incentive funds, they do not go back into county general. Anything that's spent out of our county general comes back to you at 66%. So our incentive money is based on our performance. So the best look at the performance of the whole United States, and then they break it down to your state, and then they break it down to your county based on your performance. And then that's what you get back.
And that performance is the 70%? What's a 70% or 70.96%?
Tell me this math.
Well, you have.
Oh, that's, that's relating to our percentage. That's not related to incentive fund. That's where, that's kind of like the scoreboard for the state. And you know, what I'm really proud of is, you know, sometimes we always figure out GPAs in school, or have to get a, have to ace this test just to get a few incremental points. I mean, the office had to work really hard to get that over 70%. So at, at those increments, it's really, it's, it's great work.
There's very few that are even over 60.
Right.
As you said, they, they're awesome in that office.
So you're basically asking us for approval to spend that $8,000 out of that money? Is that what you're asking them?
I am, but I think it's, so we're, I appreciate the auditors office, they always guide me through this. It's a modification of the salary limits because for Shelley, for Nancy, and for Julie, it would raise their 2022 pay by $2,000.
In this last pay period?
Yes.
Well, Charlie, just kidding. Any questions? Concerns? I'm going to make a motion now we approve it. Kenny makes a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Deanna seconds. Any other discussion?
Yeah, this is just a one-time, that's like a bonus.
It's like a bonus.
Salary bonus, yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
My second request in those lines is in prosecutor fund 10601, in the deputy administrator, we had Martina Bolt working in our office through the first pay period in October. And John, good motion. She left for more pay. She, she loved working for us, but she left for more pay. Of course, Bill won the election, and now we've lost Julie. You get attached to our interns. We have $8,602 left in our intern appropriations. We had Sidney Meyer, who is exceptional. And I make, and to her credit, I think she's now understanding she's exceptional. So we're trying to get her back, but lots of people like Sidney and where she's at. So she did not work as much as we thought that she might. And Vice McCullough became the student body president at Wadash College. So again, exceptional young man, but his opportunities are, are growing elsewhere, so we did not get them back either. So we have appropriated and unspent in county general for salaries for interns, and what was left of Martinez, that total I figured out to be $16,732.86. And of that, we're requesting that Sarah Bolt, Cindy Stevens, and Karen Paganboffin receive a $2,000 bonus in this last pay period out of that unappropriated, unspent, appropriated but unspent county general line. What we tried to do is through, you know, we tried to do our own version of attrition to see if we were able, in Martinez's slot, could we absorb that work with our free deputy administrators by, by changing workflow, by changing physical space where they, where they are upstairs. And while we were able to sustain some parts, we, we weren't able to sustain the day-to-day fires that, that kind of come up in that job that are kind of really hard to explain. But, but calendars shift. We, we get hearings set at nine, they get moved to 11. We have officers coming at nine, we have to get them moved to 11. We just missed a lot. We have 48 hours from the time we got the rest to get public cause found, to get charge filed. And we, we shouldn't have to babysit other agencies, but we do to make sure that all of that happens within that 48 hours. We missed a couple. Ultimately, it's our responsibility to make sure that the orders get done and get sent back to the general, to make sure that we get the reports, to make sure we get the names spelled right. Just those, those details that in public safety are, are critical. We, we didn't sustain that over this period of time without Martinez. So we will hire, and it's already been appropriated, it's already been budgeted. We will rehire that position back in, in 2023. But we are asking for the, for the added work that we didn't get from Sidney and Bryce, and the added work that we didn't get from Martinez, and the money that you've already appropriated, and we spend that 2,000 each for Sarah, Sidney, and Karen. I think that, to that, to that extent, I know the question is what about everybody else? I think I'm emotional today because a friend got arrested last night. And I think that's what you don't see in public safety, like with the sheriff's department. When, when you're on that front line, we don't have the luxury of saying, go sit in the courtroom, or we can't talk to you about that. You know, upstairs, we have couches and, and coffee, and we have candles, and we invite the folks to it and to, and, and hear about their issue and try to resolve that issue because when they come to us, they're impressed about a family member, or a, a son, or a niece, or a nephew, and sometimes in a small community, they're friends. So it's, it can be tough. It's going to be a tough day today, and I appreciate the work that those three have done to try to sustain this for this period of time. And would ask that you consider 2,000 each for them.
I'll make a motion, we'll allow that, 2,000 for each. Somebody picked up the.
This is coming out of county general, correct?
That's it, yes. And I, what I would recommend is, I think it's, I might need guidance on this. I would recommend that it come out of prosecutor fund 10321 that was appropriated for the interns. I feel fairly certain that, that it's there, it's, it's appropriated, and it is for work.
$8,600 or whatever.
It would be $6,000 of the $8,602 that was there right now.
So are we okay with doing this anytime there's a vacancy in a department and people have to step up and do more?
We're done, we're done that in the past already. They'll, they'll lose somebody, and take that salary and disperse it to have people not hire someone else.
But yes, hiring.
For next year.
Next year.
It's already budgeted for next year.
Somebody had to do the work.
Yes, thank you.
You're paying, you're going to pay the person that left, or you're going to pay the people that picked up the slack?
Yeah.
And that's what I'm voting for, is to.
What about the offices that had, I mean, we didn't have to get rid of them, but you suggested it, and then you cut that person? We all have to step up and do that work on as well.
Yeah, but they weren't.
I mean, I'm not saying that they don't deserve it.
They weren't the office that was asked to lose a person. They weren't overstaffed.
The reason they were asked to lose a person is because the numbers showed us that those offices were overstaffed compared to the other offices in our state.
But we still have to do the extra work for that person. Just saying. And I'm not saying that they don't deserve it, but they do, they work very hard up there.
I have a motion on the floor for Bill.
I'll second that motion.
Kenny seconds. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Two more things. I do, I know you're working on, through the study and so on, so I appreciate that. Thank you for doing that. I meant to come down and thank you collectively for the IT efforts, those guys, and that's amazing. It's been amazing. So we appreciate that very much. Thank you for doing that.
Just running in here?
I'm, I'm in here.
Okay.
She's under the weather.
Sweet fact.
Well, I'm in the initials report. So for the month of November, with all the flu accounts that we have for investment, we made $103,452.72 in interest. And then we're, we've got three bits, and we're going to invest the special purpose tax, three million of it, and we got it going to a CD for 18 months at 4.85%.
What is that?
And we're making that this week.
You know what that balance is?
She didn't put three million in.
And it's got 5.5 million in it, the finance. So we're taking.
Three million at four point.
At 4.85% for 18 months.
That's guaranteed that, for guaranteed lock-in rate?
Yes, I believe so, I think. To get back with Johnny, I think so. Because she's the one that's been talking to investment here. It's in Greensburg. Bayer?
Bear.
Bayer, yeah, I'm a Bayer. So, and then we're going to be transferring that this week. We've sent over the ACE form for them to fill out everything so we can get that to them.
So the special purpose is staying on the phone, so.
Yeah.
We just not going into county general?
No.
Okay.
It's, yeah. And that's all.
Any final questions? Okay. Dipro abatement.
Actually, we're going to postpone that for the next month, if that's okay. It, it has to do with some coordination with the state, but we'll move to the next agenda, if that's okay. So.
I have checked on your water estimate. You're right, man, a lot. I can't believe that.
Yeah, yeah, it's a, we're dealing with that, but I think we're going to back forward, and I think we, you know, we've offered any conversations with you guys to keep you abreast of that, how that's going, but, yeah, we continue to work with the program, it's out there, yeah.
I couldn't, I couldn't comprehend that.
Yeah.
A mile, a mile clear of that. Okay, anybody else have anything before we move on to transfers and additions? Okay, let's move on to transfers.
The last two listed were the only two that were added after. Those were emailed out because they were under paper. So those were the only ones that were not emailed.
You're probably going to carry meals for the year now. We're going to be all right.
Can't tell us what 22 or 23 will be, but.
Yeah, that's going to be part of the program. If I see anything on there, any questions? Concerns? It is the end of the year. Entertained a motion to approve.
I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Ashley makes a motion to approve. Kenny seconds.
Second.
Not only seconds, any other discussion on the transfers? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, move on to the additions. Okay, move on to the additionals.
Daddy, I got a question. Should've brought it up quicker, I guess. Is there a chance that this transferred money, it's not all used to go back into County General, or is it all just being transferred to get barred up?
No, I think if it gets encumbered back into County General.
I guess the council would appreciate if you really don't need the money, send it back, we'll reappropriate it.
What's transferred if it is not encumbered? Uh, yes, at the end of the year, it goes back into cash, because the 2023 budget takes over. But again, sometimes you transfer so that you can encumber, so that you're using twenty-two monies. It'll get paid in twenty-three, but it was either an invoice or a contract. And again, I think it's, it's good stewardship to, to use what's appropriated this year, not, not to overspend it, or just.
Just waste it.
Waste it, but I, I think our departments are very frugal, they're not, uh, have to have a party on it.
Okay. First, go on to the additionals. I guess that's what all these folders are, correct?
Yes, they are.
Okay, let's do that one last. Elected officers training. Any $2,000 additional for elected officer training fund to be an additional?
That's the fund that pays for, um, the elected officials lodging and mileage to go to train, and then usually plus one deputy, but we asked for an additional four a few months ago, but there have been so many people go to training and go to AIC and things like that, that it, it just goes, it just stays in that fund, and there's nowhere to transfer from, that fund is just that one line, so that's why I ask an additional.
I understand that, I just want to go to county officers training.
Yeah, and that's what pays for it, that's the line that is paid.
Come out of February.
I think it's going into January.
February seventh and eighth. Okay, everybody understand that, entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Yeah, make a motion to approve, earning seconds. Any other discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? County General jail. This is one where the money got put back in County General. You wanna move it back into your overtime pay.
It's reimbursing.
It's reimbursing, in fact, you put money in from commissary to.
Right, so the money was paid where we had the REC program, overtime was paid for that, commissary wrote the check to reimburse County General, so it's going back into there from where we paid it out, so it's just reimbursement.
Okay, everybody get that? Thirty-four hundred and thirty-five dollars and nineteen cents.
I'll make a motion, we.
Bill makes motion to approve, eight seconds.
Not only.
Not only seconds, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Okay, animal control, she needs eighty-six hundred. Total amount, correct? Six thousand for adoption charges, twenty-six hundred for utilities. Did you look and see how much she's?
I'm sorry, I did not take that down.
Okay.
I will get it.
Because what we gave her an additional last time was how much? Fifteen, fifteen, and this is for eighty-six, and she's, the form I had at home, she's already put back from other charges, what, thirty-eight thousand?
That's what's been.
Something like that, so really, we're just giving them money back, but, I mean, I think she has to have it. Everybody understand that?
Yep.
Entertained a motion for animal control. So move, Kenny makes motion.
I'll second.
Ten seconds, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, highway. Two hundred thousand, bridge repair. Is for the Westport Bridge, retaining Bridge Two Thirty-Nine and Bridge Seventy-Three, correct? Seventy-Three?
Westport covered bridge.
Yeah, it's, it's a little bit like the fuel thing, I mean, the bridges we were building for the same length, you know, a year ago, we're a hundred thousand dollars, now we're two hundred thousand dollars, so, um, it's, it's one of those things that you, once you start a project, you just have to keep going, and be dumping back out, so, uh, that's where that comes from. It's actually not County General, it's out of our cash and King Bridge, so.
Comes out of Coon Bridge.
Yeah.
Do I understand that? Okay, entertained a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Ashley makes motion.
I'll second.
Burning seconds, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? How much was the Westport repair on that bridge?
Hundred and some thousand, uh, there's a contribution from Westport residents. We get a thousand dollars a year for our covered bridge that's accumulated. We emptied that account, and the rest of it, the remainder, came out of a King Bridge, so.
Because there was a.
Yeah, the job was well done.
Westport covered bridge account, I think there's been some ruins in there.
We, we've used it, yeah, we, we, we used everything before we started using our King Bridge, yeah. So we don't need another flood to tear all the side jobs out of it.
And it did cleaned up on the other end, so it don't get that away?
Little bit, little bit. And we do have some King Bridge information, you want us to save that till the end, or you wanna talk?
Go right ahead right now.
You want me to do this?
Please, please.
There is actually a grant through NDOT coming out, uh, it opens up January the second. It's a lot like our bridge grants, it's an eighty-twenty split, and basically, it's money that's been left over for accumulation of years, that now they're calling a preventive maintenance grant. So basically, what we've got, we're in a situation in the county where we have a lot of bridges that were built in the late fifties, early sixties, that their lifespan is coming to an end in a hurry. So this would be a lot of deck repair, where you get spalding decks, where that water gets down into the T-beams or whatever, that starts deteriorating the whole bridge, it's gonna bite some life out of it. The problem we have in our office is, I think, a few years back, I don't know what year it was, we lowered the King Bridge tax. My personal opinion, a mistake, but that's, I'm not on the council. Just like the fuel, we are in a, in an era where all our pricing is going up, but our revenue is going down. So I would hope you would consider at some point in time, looking at reversing that and raising that back up, because, you know, I'm, I'm retired, I'm out of the picture, but I can tell you, from that side of the road, it's, it's gonna bite us here one of these days in the near future. This eighty-twenty grant is a way for us to go through and repair twenty, twenty-five different bridges at one time. Probably won't be done until two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six, once all the money's there, but you do have all that engineering that goes on for the next three or four years, right away, if it seems to be, so. Just something I want the councils, from behalf of Todd and I, to be aware of, uh, at some point in time, things are gonna really get tight, uh, for years, we threw money back into King Bridge at the end of the year, carried it over and, and got a pretty good cushion, I feel like, but on three, three million dollar bridges, that cushion goes away in a hurry. So just food for thought.
How much grant money's gonna be out there?
You remember, it was a ton, but I don't know, I mean, millions. You had to be approved through NDOT, um, or, uh, what do you even call it, basically? You had to go through and list all your bridges and how they were rated and so forth. Our key is, we don't think very many counties did it, we were one of, I know of two right now that did it. So if there's a hundred million dollars out there, and there's only three people after it, that's a ton of change. But twenty percent of a lot of millions is still a lot of money.
So we've already applied for it, we're just waiting to hear.
We haven't applied, we have been approved to be able to apply for the grant, along with a few other counties.
They give twenty percent, I was hoping it's the other way.
Yeah. We give the twenty.
I was hoping we was giving the twenty.
We are, we are. Million dollars, we're gonna give eight hundred thousand, it's not possible.
And we, and we don't know, uh, this is the first, this is the first time they've had a call for this, we don't know if it's just a one-time, one-done, or if they're gonna continue like they do the community crossing grant. But we actually did the work, submitted, we got approved, and we're gonna submit, what, January third? I think what the call is, to see if we get actually approved for the grant. So I guess with me taking over, it's, when I was on the bridge crew, there, there are a lot of bridges that need a deck repair, or an overlay, or, you know, the embunklings are fading away, what we can do to repair them, so. I think going forward, I think it'd be, if it's a one-done, I, I just assume get what we can while we can. So to help maintain some of the, the older bridges, um, that we've got, so we're geared, we're geared, geared up right now to put a crew on, uh, basically, it's a bridge cleanup crew. So we're gonna be going through the, the winter months, going around and making sure the decks are broomed off, doing whatever we can to help maintain that, and hopefully, we do get awarded this, uh, grant, to where we can go through and do some, a little bit more repair to try and get ten, fifteen years out of a bridge that we might, might have to replace, something happened, and then we're out of luck, we don't have anything.
How is King Bridge, uh?
It should be on your schedule, it's playing the balance of what you're asking.
Well, I. It's a tax例外.
Yeah, it's got some tax, yeah, we've done it, Jim.
It's a little.
I think Ruben was recommending that, that the King Bridge, maybe in the KID cap, address that next year and get those rates up, there's extra steps.
Yeah.
I think that was on Ruben's, Ruben's list of things to look at, wasn't it?
Correct.
Yeah, we're gonna, I'll, I'll make sure he looks at it and we'll see where we're at.
Because I know there's a certain time that has to be put in for it to, to take off, and if you miss that deadline, then you're a calendar year away.
I'll have Ruben take one, see what, what suggestions.
Thank you, as of that, as of now, we're planning on applying for the grant, so.
Okay.
We're all on the same page here.
Okay, let's move on here to health department additional. Ninety, ninety-nine hundred, seventy-four dollars, two hundred and fifty dollars telephone, six fifty travel, you're going a long way off. Office records, other service agreement, and nursing supplies, eighty-eight ninety-two, as part of that, that, those, uh, shots.
Yeah, the nursing supplies, which is the big one there, um, actually, we signed up with a company, we are now able to receive reimbursement from a company called Vax Care for every shot we give. They deal insurance, if a person doesn't have insurance, we don't get paid, but we still do the shots. We, everybody now can get shots from the Decatur County Health Department, not just uninsured, and not just the vaccine for children program. In order to do that, we have that eighty-six hundred, or whatever it was there exactly, um, was to come out of a grant. However, Vax Care bought back all of our vaccine, so I couldn't pay the vaccine bill out of the grant, because it would have been co-mingling, so I'm asking for additional to pay that, but the money's in our cash from Vax Care. They sent us a check for eight thousand, we've received a little over eleven thousand from them already, and we just started in October. So it's gonna be very nice income for us, a little bit of additional income, and so it's well worth doing this.
Everybody understand that? Good, entertain a motion to approve the health additional. So move, Kenny makes motion.
I'll second it.
Bill seconds, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Everything working out good at the move, and?
You know, I almost hate to say it, but it couldn't be gone any better. Don't wanna jinx anything.
Special purpose jail tax, twenty-five thousand, cover utility bills for twenty-twenty-two. Just take it out of the, is it in the red now? Just takes it out and makes it. Everybody understand that? Anybody want, any discussion? Entertained a motion to approve.
So move.
Ernie made a motion.
I'll second.
The end of seconds, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? One more here. Ready Grant Funding. This coming out of the ARP money?
Yes.
Okay, we've got one point five five seven, one million, five hundred and fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Thirty-nine thousand, one eighty-seven for the radios. One million, four hundred and eighty-five thousand for ready, which is cool.
Yes.
Thirty-three thousand, one hundred for the fence. Okay. For the jail. Okay. The thirty-nine, one eighty-seven is a.
Yes. Are you looking at me? It was a joint project with, uh, Greensburg. So the ARBA committee funded the two thousand, Greensburg funded the two thousand. The bill runs through us, then we invoice the city for their part. We've gotten those reimbursements, but we have to do the additional to put them back in the appropriation to finish the project, so. There'll be one more coming, because I was off on my calculations, so that'll be next year.
Okay. And the thirty-three, one hundred is the fence, and you, that's the true budget on it, true estimate?
That's the maximum.
That's the maximum.
What we did, we took the old fence down, where the pods were, and they're gonna use as much of that and delete, delete that from the, the bill, but he, he gave me a maximum bill in case all that was junk.
One million, four hundred and eighty-five thousand for?
The ready match for the Aquatic Center.
Okay, this is the one I have questions on. Has it been ran through the commissioners, is this county property? Is a pool county property?
Yeah.
Has it been, I mean, I'm just going by the way we did the jail, is what I'm going by, has it been, has the commissioners signed off on it? Has it been brought to their attention yet?
Well, yeah, Mark was on the ready team that we proposed this project with.
Well, I'm asking if it matters three out of.
And Chuck is on the ARBA committee.
Okay, well, there's still one more to go.
That's the majority.
Well, I just wondered if they had. Now, what's, what is the, I've never seen the estimates on this, the only thing I've seen is what I pulled up for Ready Grant.
It's on the councilwithus.com that I sent to your email.
Didn't, I didn't see.
The estimate, the estimate is nine to ten million dollars, but that's an estimate. We had to have that to begin the whole discussion of the project, and then look on what our ideal project is.
And what put together a funding plan.
That's what we're working on now, the reason we're appropriating this money now is to show that our county is in support of the project. So we don't need this money now, we wouldn't even have to appropriate it necessarily now, but it's to show that if we have the support to, to back up the match for the ready program, we've already got it in, in the process. Brian submitted it into the IEDC's program, we are in that for the one point five, this is a match to the funding that we're getting from the state funding for the ready project. So we have to show. So we have to show that we matched that support, and that's all this is right now.
I just don't feel like we're going through the proper procedures. That's my opinion, because I, knowing what about the jail, how we went through that, and to me this is another.
We're not committed to building anything at this point, it's just approving the funding, should we get the, the project off the ground.
It'll go through the same process as what the jail did when it gets to that point, but right now, there's X amount of things have to happen with funding before they can even proceed forward. So nothing's been approved, nothing's been done with the facility itself, other than just a preliminary design stage and all that, which is a starting point.
Yeah, we don't have any higher people to build it or anything like that.
Deal with the ready grant, Indiana's a lot more about this than I do, but you have to get your funding set up initially before you can proceed forward, and get that approved, once that all gets approved, yeah, we're going to do this project, and they have to go out and start soliciting funds from outside that program first, and then see what kind of commitment they get there, and then nothing's been done as far as like with the jail, because we haven't got to that point yet. But the ARPA funding, we set aside that million and a half dollars, and it's for us to get that appropriated out of there, just so we know that that money's designated for that, doesn't mean it's going to get spent, if the program doesn't happen, then it doesn't happen.
Oh, I agree with you.
So, but right now, I'm thankful for your understanding, Danny, that we, we moved forward and with the design and all that kind of stuff, none of that's been done yet. It hasn't even come to the table yet, until the funding process gets more further along than what it is right now. So when that gets to that point, then the other commissioners will have to be involved in it, because it's their, it's their property, but we haven't got to that point yet.
How do you, what, what are your options for funding the rest of this? You got any ideas, Alex?
We have ideas, um, yes, but we have to show that we can support this via this, show the state and other entities that we have this support before they're going to jump in on it, if, if they don't see the support coming from us.
So there could be more funding coming from the state on this project?
We've got other grants, we've already also got other grants out to corporations already, and we'll be working on more of those as well. We've also folded in the community foundation to help us with that. They are supporting this project as one of their community projects that they're supporting.
Okay, but, but I guess in the end, how much will come down to the county taxpayers of Decatur County?
There's no way for us to know that yet.
Because don't you have to have X amount of percentage of private dollars designated?
The entire ready program has a, a matched public, private, yes, so that, there's, there's an element to that. Just as a reminder, the whole pro, pro, premise of the ready program is to have projects for our region, which would be Shelby, Rush, Decatur, and City of Batesville, that will help us draw people into our region, that will support our entire region. So that's why when you look at a, a nine to ten million dollar pool, it's not just a refurbishment of the pool that we have, but it's something that is a regional draw, that's the whole intent of the funds to begin with.
I just don't think, uh, that's me.
And that's, that's an initial estimate, should, should the process not bring up nine to ten million, then we have to take a step back, look at our drawings and say, okay, well, we've got seven million, what can we do with seven million? I, I just don't think it's feasible to look at our current pool in the state that it's in and say, well, let's put some more cement on it, let's put a new flight on it, and go forward, that's not going to get us anywhere.
I think, I think it needs work done too.
I guess, I'd rather see a sign of, ladies and gentlemen, agreement that we will make this money available, I hate just to appropriate the money right off the top.
I, I, I just feel like we need to see more information, that's just my, how everybody else feels, but like I said, I'm just a time breaker here. You know? And I, I agree.
We can either appropriate the money, or we can just leave it laying there, I mean, but the only problem is, if we don't have that appropriation signed and approved, then it doesn't, there's no commitment on our part that we're going to give a million and a half dollars. That's what we're trying to do, just make sure that there's some paper trail saying that we've committed that a million and a half dollars, that the project goes through. So, you know, if you, you can't just, at this day and age, you can't just go on a handshake, or yeah, we'll prove that, and we got to have some tangible to give to the, to, you know, economic developments in the ready group, saying that we've committed this money. Now whether, if it doesn't go through and doesn't happen, then we still got the money, it's not like we're, we got to give it to them. So if we don't appropriate it, then there's no.
And if we appropriate the one point five, and that matches the ready, the one point five, so we're already at three million for the start of our project. Um, we've gone to numerous pools around the state, researched what the cost is. A splash pad alone, a good high-end splash pad is three to four million, is that what, for just a splash pad? Just to give you an idea.
Well, so any questions?
So if we approve this, 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 this would be dedicated just to a pool project, it could not go to a walking trail or something like that, where we had options still be on the table? I mean, what you're basically saying is this money is going to go to a new pool renovation?
If it happens, yes.
Then if that don't happen, where's it go to?
They just go move, re-appropriate for something else, and then.
I guess are we leaving our options open a little bit there?
I mean, you can't just pull it out there and send it to another project if the pool project's going on.
I mean, the premise of the project is for the Aquatic Center. It has been presented to IEDC, Brian, I don't know if you have some.
Yeah, I, um, for the, for the ready project, in order to, to leverage their one point five million towards the project, we would need to have it uh, go towards, um, the Aquatic Center, or that, we could make an argument for that area to go, so if by chance somehow, you know, a benefactor or something came in and said, this is our own type of pool, we can still use that one point five and leverage the other one point five from the state to develop, um, you know, raccoons at the ballpark, or something used in that area. It was just when we, when we did the ready, uh, plan, uh, if you recall, it was a very hurried situation, and it was a lot of talks going with the fairgrounds. We knew that the, the pool was in very good, bad shape, and then when you got that price tag, we figured out that that's going to be a big focus for that area out there, so that's why we were kind of tackling that, that, uh, that facility first. But yes, to your question, that, um, if you guys do appropriate it to the, the pool or that, that area, it can be used for a walking trail out there or something like that, as long as we can see that.
Well, I guess that's part of my question, would we be ahead spending five billion on a pool, and maybe five billion on surrounding sport buildings or fairgrounds or something like that? Really don't at all in a pool?
Yeah, well, it all comes down to dollars and cents, as you said, and as you've heard saying, well, we've, we've found out, and, you know, talking about a lot of water, what it costs right now. Five million gets you a pretty nice splash pad and something, it's, it's, it's kind of nuts out there in a way, and we're, we're, we're trying to navigate that the best we can. It's just, uh, I don't think anything's getting too cheap, and honestly, from the pool side, I think everybody maybe, uh, just from getting sense, everybody agrees that the pool doesn't owe us any money, it's over sixty years old, and I'm sure it was a big investment back when they put it in.
Well, I think we spent a lot of money on that pool.
Well, over the time, I, I, I think it's, it's, you know, we've been, and Teresa's here, she could probably tell you exactly what, what's been going in, but we've been just kind of fixing, you know, hatching it here, hatching it there, and like other communities, uh, who have finally kind of done a full big investment into their their pools and such, uh, communities that actually attract us loads of people, of kids from Decatur County to go to their pools outside of our, our county. Um, we, we're thinking that it's, it's time, and with the ready funds being available, uh, being able to get a, a million and a half from the state to help do it is pretty nice. I will be looking for obviously other means of, uh, of, of funding, uh, both locally and from outside the community, to, to cover these, but as I said, to Deanna's part, uh, point, uh, this is, these are first steps in this process. This is, this is, nobody's going to be writing any checks anytime soon or anything like that, this still needs to be refined. I think the group was excited about, uh, the drawings and the options for us, uh, wanted to take advantage of, you know, the giving towards the end of the year, and we have had donations from the community, we've had a lot of, uh, excitement about it. Um, it's something that's been brought up in countless, um, plans, both the ready plan, but also on our, um, stellar, distellate program, it's constantly brought up as an asset that the community has that, uh, is really kind of falling out of shape or could use enhancement. Um, and here we're trying to capitalize on everything, on, on, on funding mechanisms to, to make that happen. Unfortunately, those funding mechanisms are coming in course of incredibly high prices, so.
Would there be an alternative attraction we could put in that place instead of a pool that no other counties have that might be a draw to bring people in, such as hands-on museum or something that we could open more than three months a year?
Uh.
I mean, have we looked into any of those options?
If you haven't looked on something.
We haven't really looked at anything like that, and like what Deanna said, we, we've been working on this since early spring as far as ideas, and we did go to five different pools, and like, and from those pools, one of, you know, but most of them were about our size, one of them was a lot larger, but we went there just to get their ideas on how they went from a, from an old pool like ours, Greenfield did the very same thing, they had, had an old pool. They did keep basically their pool shell, I don't know that ours is even.
Well, I understand that, but I'd say maybe something completely different.
Right, but we have not, we've not looked into anything like that at this point.
They're great for three months, and then you got nine months of nothing. I don't know, I just say that might be a different option, spend their money there.
Well, and as far as a museum, that's something that Batesville has on their, uh, ready program, so there's going to be one of those going in ready in Batesville.
I mean, that's something you can use year-round.
Yeah, and I would say with, I think also with pools, we're looking at the gold diamonds that are out there also, the downhill parks and a lot of outdoor amenities, so um, something that would draw a bit more, and in coordination with the, uh, improvements on Park Road, finally getting some, some trails and such out there. It really, really, it's a, it's kind of a, a unique, um, almost kind of historical time to actually focus on that, that area out there, because so much is going on, it's been talked about for, uh, well, with the past, it's gone back to the nineteen eighties, so people have been asking for that. Having, uh, being able to utilize the gold diamonds out there, having additional traction of the, of the pool, all diamonds obviously been used, you know, throughout the summer and into fall, uh, spring, um, and then you have the renovations that are going to be going on, the, the fairgrounds, you have a really good opportunity to make that a really impressive, uh, place, and, uh, it's, uh, it's one of the home team.
And with this plan, we, we hope to bring more things to the pool, not just what you're used to seeing at the pool, like more uses of it where we can bring people in in the mornings for respite care or rehab, walking in if we do get this lazy river, they, utilize that for exercise purposes, where the hospital, we might be able to pair up with them, they can come out and walk with people, we can use it for certain times for, um, special needs children, we can do things differently, and yes, I know it's a short season, with the school calendar, it's shortened our pool season, that's no, you know, we can't.
Maybe we should build a pool that we can, you, indoor in the wintertime and outdoor at some.
Yeah. How are you talking?
Well, I mean, let's have something nobody else has got.
Well, it's a, it's a public health asset, like Teresa said, it's part of why it pairs so well with, with an ARPA money, is because the original intent of the ARPA money was to replace losses due to COVID, replace extra expenses due to COVID, and/or prepare should we become in a situation similar to COVID, where this is an outside activity that would be more promoting than an inside activity would.
Absolutely.
I just don't think a proper procedure was standing, that's just my opinion.
Well, not, not from my perspective at all, because like I said, all, all we're doing right now is just looking at the finances, so we're not doing any kind of, I mean, the commissioners are going to have, I was saying all of it, nobody's gone there and done anything as far as design work or hiring anybody or nothing right now.
And actually, the footprint is the same as the footprint that we have now, believe that or not.
It's pretty much going to be in the same place.
Yes.
But they'll be brought on board when that time comes, just like we did with the jail. So, but you got to get the.
It's basically just a vote of support to show that we, we're supporting this.
If we don't approve the money right now, like I said, there's no commitment on our side until that happens. So they basically would look at it and say, if you don't have the one point five million from the your ARPA money, it's because I don't see a thing here says you approve it, to spend it on that.
And the, the other thing, uh, some of it's been, been, uh, I, I don't want to say it quick, but the state, the state's looking to do the ready two point oh program, so they're trying to get as many pro, uh, projects moving forward, so they can say, hey, look at all of the, and, and there's been tremendous amount of progress on all the projects, but they're really pushing to have the stuff lined up as much as possible, not necessarily the shelves and graphs and everything, but all lined up, so they can say, here's, here's all the project results from first round of ready, and here we do next round of ready, which could potentially offer some additional funds, uh, ready, on ready two point oh. And they're ready to go, you know, essentially, these, these, these regions are ready to, for these next projects. Uh, so that, that's another reason why, why I think, uh, Deanna's been pushing to kind of get these committed, is because it looks, uh, I should say it just looks, but it shows that we're, we're progressing on the projects that we're approving.
Well, I'd be willing to approve a project at that footprint, I wouldn't necessarily say cool.
We, we can, I mean, we can certainly.
And I don't think we want to lock ourselves.
Just go edge to stone right at the moment, so.
I will say that we've seen a lot of public support just from the initial kind of soft, we, this was just a soft rollout. Uh, we'll have more hopefully in the spring when people are looking more towards summer activities, but we've seen much more support than negativity on the, on the project as a whole.
And we do have, I mean, ARPA's still got pretty decent-sized chunk of money in the banks, and we're going to manage to run that, so.
Yeah, even after this, we would have one point eight million that we've not appropriated.
Yeah. Say there's over a million dollars left, and we had to appropriate it. And I, I will tell you, the, the funding that we've appropriated up to this point, we have intentionally supported the community and the county in big ways, I mean, that's, that's our intent with the money, we've done all that to the point where we're looking at, you know, trying to do long-term stuff, with all the immediate needs from our nonprofit providers, our business owners, our fire departments, we have taken care of all of that up to this point. So we're, and we're working with the animal shelter, we're going to help them with some projects, so the money's being spent the way it's supposed to be, is, is being spent, so. Then we've still got a million point eight dollars, three hundred thousand dollars left, even after the one point five comes out, so.
I'm going to make a motion, will you approve that transfer?
Bill made the motion, Ashley seconded, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Order appointments, I think, I didn't, I brought my copy along. Uh, what do we got left?
You get my email?
Yeah, Don's going to do that.
You get my email about Fraser Board, um, Stephanie, how we did out of it?
Yeah, I've got about that far yet. Brad Don said, say?
Yes.
Okay, Chris Tebby told me he would be our lawyer. Property tax, she's going to stay on? Okay, Tourism Board, Joanne Burkhardt will stay. I did get a phone call from Zane Paulson, he would like to replace Stephanie, that is his employee. If anybody has any problem with that, she is Zane Paulson. He said he would like to replace Stephanie because she is his employee, and he would like to serve a couple of years, and.
She don't like that?
Huh?
She is.
Yeah, she still wants to do it, but he's, he's the one who called me, said she's my employee, I want to do it.
Oh, so he's the boss.
Yeah, he pulled on that line, but he, he said he would like to serve it's a two-year term, a two-year term. Yeah, he said he'd like to do it for a couple of years and see what's going on, if that's all right with everybody.
Can't overrule that.
Huh?
Can't overrule that.
Okay, I'll make, I need a motion, but Zane Paulson.
I'll make that one.
Kenny makes the motion.
I'll second it.
Bill seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same pulse.
On her, she's for that or against that?
He just, he volunteered, and I, he said, well, she's my employee, so I think I'm going to, I want to do it for a couple of years, and. All right, Phil?
Since you're on the point, I, I just served for it.
Okay, and Redevelopment Tip Board, Matt Miller said he'd stay on, if it's all right with you, I'll stay on. Okay? Okay, and redevelopment tip board, Matt Miller said he'd stay on. If it's all right with you, I'll stay on. Okay?
Yeah.
Okay. And I got, is this a contract we signed with the prosecutor?
Yes.
Pardon me?
Approving that he can continue as a full partner.
Okay, it is a contract with the prosecutor. Yes, I need to sign it that he will stay on as our prosecutor after he's been active. Don't read any of it. It's all right here. Sure enough. Okay. Well, they're looking at that. I'll tell everybody. Bill and I have contacted Ruben, uh, contacted Bill. And I talked to Ruben about looking at the special purpose tax, see if it could be taken down a little bit. On the jail special purpose tax, maybe give him back a little bit. With the way things are, he will have a presentation after the first year on what he can, what it would still bring in and what it wouldn't. If that's all right with everybody? Anybody else have anything for us? I'll miss anything, Dan?
I'd like to thank Mark Moore for twenty-seven years of service.
Yes, sir.
And Shelley for doing a good job in that. I'd like to thank the council for being good to work with too.
And we didn't bring you no cake or nothing.
That's fine.
Okay, I need a motion to, I guess, approve the prosecutor for next four years.
I'll make that motion.
Ernie makes the motion. Deanna seconded. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good and firing.
When can we change special purpose?
He's going, he's going to get us something by the first year and I think it's, there's a certain time in there, Jan, July or September or something.
That I don't know in the special purpose.
I think he said something.
He probably wanted to run it along the King Taff and King Bridge. Is that what the high person did all the motions in New York?
Oh, I have to, King Bridge and things like that. I don't know. I'll call him back this afternoon. Sit down, Dan. She can fill the rest. Anybody else have his name? Like Bill said, thanks Mark. Appreciate it. Thank you. New sheriff, you got anything?
I'm right now. Thank you, Dan.
Okay.
Sheriff Allett.
Allett, sorry.
I'm a little bit confused.
Okay, everybody have a Merry Christmas. Do what?
I'm making the motion Merry Christmas.
I'll second.
Ernie.